All right, so we are now live. You can start the meeting as you're ready.
All right. Welcome, everybody. I just wanted to thank everybody for coming to this meeting. It's been a long time since we've had any updates and I want to thank Representative Carol Fiola and Representative Paul Schmidt for attending and really pushing for this meeting with DEP. I totally appreciate it.
Select woman Pacchico, before we start, we just need to do a quick roll call just to let everyone know who's here. So from the town of Freetown, we have the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Lisa Pacchico. Selectman George Grunwald is also present. Selectman Matthews was unable to make it tonight. We also have Town Administrator Peter Jankowski, Board of Health Agent Tanya Danielle. We have, who else is here? Fire Chief Gary Sylvia. We also have Representative Carol Fiola and Paul Schmidt as well. We have some representatives from DEP. I'll let them introduce themselves when we get to them. And we also have some residents on the line as well. We're good.
Does, Millie, do you want to just let everybody know who's here from DEP, please?
Sure. Good evening. This is Millie Garcia-Sarano. I serve as the Regional Director for the Mass DEP in the Southeast Region. With me today is Mr. Seth Pickering, who's the Deputy Regional Director for the Bureau of Erinway. And also, Mr. Attorney Dan DeHattaville, who serves as one of our senior attorneys at Mass DEP in the Southeast Region.
All right. I just want to make notice that Attorney Marky from Excel is also, I can see him, that he just popped in. I'm not sure if anybody else from Excel is on the line.
At this point, my client was considering having a, one of his assistants try to monitor the call, but I'm not sure if she was able to get on the call, but he's asked me to just kind of listen in and hear how things go. So thank you very much for the introduction.
You're so welcome. So I just want to focus tonight on three areas of concern for the town right now. That are the so-called explosions. Also, the container wall that is not yet built. And also, hours of operation which continue to be a hindrance to the area and to the town. So first, I just want to let everybody know that I did send a letter and I'm, you all have an email. But lately, there have been, and I just started looking at this closer because it's, it's actually happening too often. So on 1230, 15, 112, 20, 121, 123, 125, 126, 128, 29, and 210, there were explosions. Now, you can call them whatever you want, but they were explosions. So I'm just wondering from DEP or what you think that they are?
Sure. So first, I'd like to, Select Woman Pacchico, understand, we were provided with a total of 26 questions and I just wanted, for the purposes of just rules of engagement, do you want to focus on just these three areas? Or would you like to also acknowledge the other questions that came to the fold? We spent the day of, portion of today trying to prepare. We were hoping to get these questions a little bit earlier to do justice to this very important conversation. However, if you only wish to speak to those three topics, that's fine also.
I'm speaking on behalf of just the town right now. The questions that you receive from the residents are, of course, of imminent importance as well.
Okay.
So I, those, that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna focus three, three areas for myself. And then I know that we want to try to wrap this up in an hour, so I'm gonna keep everything very succinct.
Okay, so why don't we first then commence with the phenomenon of the explosions? I think we're gonna have a little bit more conversation as it pertains to what exactly are the explosions? But in themselves, the explosions, when the word explosion is used, what Mass DEP usually looks into is the safety concern, which is why I'm, I'm glad that Fire Chief is here with us tonight. I think this is an area where we need really collaboration because it falls within the safety realm. As it pertains to loud noises, this is what Mass DEP is focusing on with regards to ensuring that there is compliance to that end. There is a requirement of the Administrative Consent Order that was issued in 2020 and is coming to fruition full head as we speak. By February 26, the anticipation is that there is an installation of the third row of containers as per the Administrative Consent Order, which would serve as mitigation for the sound. So I'd like to basically seat the floor to Fire Chief to basically understand, give, you know, understand from his perspective how the town, the Fire Chief understands that these explosions, if it is indeed an explosion and a safety concern, if he can give us his take on that. And then I'd like to have Seth Pickering from Mass DEP also offer additional response to that.
I think as far as the explosions go, whatever occurring down at Excel, it's happening so quickly, but by the time we get down there, response-wise from the fire department, the event has already resolved itself. And we have, we found no evidence of any exploded containers like that, but then again, it's a lot of scrap metal. There's a lot of pieces everywhere. We don't know if it's something that an actual explosion occurred. Was it a loud noise, something falling down? We're not quite sure, but there's no fire and there's usually no smoke by the time we get down to the, to the scene of Excel. We have had a couple of fires there that we've had to put out, which is a concern for us. Our biggest thing is we go there basically weekly to make sure we have access around the facility to get the fire apparatus through. Other than that, I can't really tell you much more about the explosion because I think the residents, they're not, they're not lying. I think something's going on, but by the time police or fire get there, the event's resolved.
So as you can see, and it's a snippet in time, right? So we hear it, the residents feel it, they hear it, they, they, they call in. Fire Department gets there, it's already done deal, right? Whatever fire might be there, and I know that they have hoses out, I've seen them before, they might even put the fire out. It's only a snippet in time, but it's gonna take that one snippet in time at the one wrong moment that something major may happen. I'm not saying it will, it may happen. And I just think that the town wants to bring it to DEP's attention because something has, we have to investigate this further. We cannot let this go.
So Select Woman Pacchico, we concur with your statement that we need to work jointly. I appreciate what the Fire Chief's observations are. We share that. It happens. If they do happen, they would happen instantaneously and attempting to get there on time to investigate. That is the question. I would invite Attorney Marky to provide some remarks because Mass DEP, when we get these complaints, our first response is to basically file that, that phone call and talk to Excel.
Right. So what I can say is that I have received from either Attorney DeHattaville or from Seth Pickering, who is, works for Millie, calls on, I would say, in the last six months, four or five occasions when somebody complained about an explosion, I would immediately call my client. I know on at least a couple of occasions, they were able to go out and ask their guys whether there was anything unusual that happened that day. And to their knowledge, again, they're working in an office, maybe they, they don't hear it the same way that, that you do and maybe the folks who are working in an active industrial area don't hear it. But I have been unable to say that there was something changed that began in December different than the way that the business has operated since it has been there. That would have caused some kind of new explosion. So I, we've been unable to identify it. I do know that there was an active effort when the sound testing was done the last time to, I determined sources of noise and a number of different policies and procedures and best management practices were put into place. And as at any workplace, can we guarantee that 100% of the time, somebody who was instructed to drop steel from a low level of, you know, 10 feet above where it was going, didn't make a mistake and dropped something from a higher level that could have caused some noise? We can't monitor entirely. I can assure you that when, when I did get the calls from Mr. DeHattaville and Mr. Pickering, we passed the word along and my clients have done continuing education with the people who operate the heavy equipment. And also, they have instructed those people that if they can identify people who are not following it, there would be disciplinary action against those employees. But systemically, they're unaware, there's been no change in the system that was approved by DEP a half a dozen years ago or so, that was tested two years ago in great detail. There's, there's been no change in the way the line is set up or in anything else that would have caused a change in the last 60 days.
So I just want to make this mention. I started monitoring it more closely over the last, from 1230 to 210, because it was happening three or four times a week. Two, you know, it was happening way too much. So that's when I started to go back and say, wait a second, this is happening too much. So something has to, there has to be a change there. And if you're saying that somebody's dropping steel and there's a discipline action or discipline order, there should be some follow-up. So if you could hand those over to the town for any, whatever discipline action is going on, I'd be very interested to look at that. Also, we could probably set up an experiment, right? We could probably take some steel, you know, and do an experiment that they drop it and see if it's the same thing as an explosion. We could also set up cameras to make sure and ensure that, that, that is what's happening. Because I think everybody here would never want it on your shoulders, knowing that there possibly could be an explosion at any time, correct?
I can't speak for Excel, but I do share the goal of ensuring that we get to the bottom of this, whether it's a hit metal piece of metal that falls or otherwise, there should definitely be some follow-up.
All right. I appreciate that. Thank you so much. So.
To your point, to your point of having cameras there, is that something that we could enforce? Because that would possibly at least identify the problem.
Attorney Marky?
I guess the, the answer is, is twofold. One is, we're trying to honor DEP's request to going in with a scientific effort on things, number one. Number two, I know that there is at least a camera system for people coming in and out and to secure the gates. Whether or not employees want to have themselves being monitored constantly, you have issues with employee retention when they are being told. I know in most places at Town Hall and at my law office, people don't want to be being watched constantly by Big Brother. That being said, we will work with DEP and if this is not an issue that gets resolved by the extra containers and they feel that it's required or appropriate, we're happy to work with the governmental agencies that are, that are overseeing us. I just don't want to be making commitments to do things in workplace privacy for individuals that I, you know, just like anybody else, we want to keep a good staff and we want to keep a professional staff and we don't want to be infringing on people's privacy. But I appreciate the, the concept and I'm happy to discuss that and discuss anything else with DEP the way that they want to try to enforce their regulations.
Okay. That is an action item for Mass DEP to follow up on.
Thank you so much. I'm gonna just, I think we've talked about this enough and we have a path forward. So I just want to move on to the third row containers and the ACO that was given out in January of last year. There has been some correspondence going back and forth between DEP and the town of Freetown. And there has been some significant, I don't know, wrong, wrong information, just to put it that way. I just want to make clear that I spoke to the building inspector today. He gave me a timeline of exactly when Excel turned in their paperwork. Let me be explicitly clear. On 9/13/21, the permit was received, but it was incomplete due to needing contractors' information. On 10/15, not 21, sorry, that would be 9/13/20, not 21. 10/15/20, they received the contractor's information. On 10/22, the permit was reviewed. On 10/30, the taxes were signed off on. On 11/2, the permit was typed up and signed. On 11/20/20, at 1:17, the secretary called and let management know at Excel that the permit was ready. 12/28, 1:35, they emailed that the permit was ready for pickup. I asked for this meeting on 1/21. 1/27, Victoria from the Building Department called once again that the permit, building permit was ready. And lo and behold, 1/27 that afternoon, the permit was picked up. So can you please tell me, now that the permit is done, when in fact, after a year, that this is gonna be complete?
So I'd like to at least speak to the Mass DEP administrative record as we understand it, but just for the benefit of everybody here, what Mass DEP is looking into and ensuring that is abided by is the paragraph, Roman numeral three, disposition in order from the Administrative Consent Order that was entered into on January 24. And what that's looking for is, within 60 days of receiving the building permit, the respondent shall install the third row of containers or other materials that would increase the height of the sound barrier located along the northern property line of the facility as described in the supplemental sound mitigation plan. So that's what we're looking for. And following that, 30 days from the installation of the third row of containers, there is gonna be a supplemental sound mitigation plan that's looking for facility-wide sound monitoring akin to what we did the last time. So I'd like to have Dan DeHattaville, at least from Mass DEP, you are correct, Select Woman, that we had an exchange of correspondence with the town. Our latest correspondence was issued on December 15 that basically requested an update because we had still not heard with regards to where was, in, in the process, where was this building permit? And so therefore, when we finally learned that the permit was picked up or issued, I don't want to speak for what transpired. Mass DEP has established February 26 as the date by which these containers need to be up. And that's the date we're operating under. So Dan, Attorney DeHattaville, if you don't mind, just providing additional information.
Yeah, I think you folks summed it up pretty good. And John, Attorney Marky can jump in if he wants to clarify it. But December 28 is the date that we're working on as far as date received. We have an email that's been provided to us from Excel, from the town, saying, come get your permit. So we're using that date, not the date that it was actually picked up, as the 60-day trigger date, which is February 26. So our understanding that the containers are on site, they're currently being installed. So I mean, from our perspective, what our timeline showed was that the permit was filed back in June as part of an amendment to an existing building permit. There was correspondence that was sent to Seth Pickering from the town, saying that it was, that that building application was deficient. Later that month, I think it might have been July, I don't have it in front of me. Excel heard from the town, they resubmitted it as a brand-new permit application. And from Excel's perspective, that was the last they had heard from the town, all the way until they were told that it was ready to be picked up, which is why the department sent two separate correspondents to the town, just trying to understand from the town's perspective where the building permit application was. All that may be moot now because they have it and they, in there and they're currently in the process of installing the containers. And as Millie mentioned, once installed, they're going to have to engage in sound monitoring or sound testing, a joint effort by both us and Excel to determine what the ambient sound is after the containers have been in place. Hopefully, it'll significantly help the noise that emanates from the facility. We won't know until actually we do the testing.
And just to clarify, our effort is separate and apart and very independent from Excel.
Correct.
We will be also looking for residents' assistance with regards to, like, the same time, secure access. So we can hopefully have the same locations and duplicate this effort. And we're aware of comments with regards to potential elevated sound, background sound. We will be monitoring this protocol very judiciously.
Okay, I just wanna, I just want to ask one question. Attorney, well, I'll ask Millie. Millie, you sent the correspondence on December 15th. Unfortunately, we were without a town administrator at that point. So probably one of the reasons why your correspondence wasn't given or answered, anyway. In the future, you can email me. I'll be more than happy to correspond with you back and forth. I haven't been afraid to do that in the past. I won't in the future. But you were saying, December 15th, you reached out to me, but then yet, I just heard December 28th as the date in which the permit was ready for pickup. And Dan, and I can't pronounce your last name.
Nobody can. It's all good.
I was gonna try, but I really don't.
It's all right. It's all, it's my whole life.
So I just, you said 12/28. That's, that's the date you're going by?
Correct. Because we have to have a trigger date at some point and we're using the date that we had in writing from the town. It's an email that was issued that was provided to us from Excel, saying, come get your permit. Since that's the only thing we have tangible, we're using that date rather than the actual date that Excel physically went into the building and picked it up.
So I would be more than happy to give you any of the correspondence that you might need, just to put into your record. Because like I said, there was some back and forth going on between the town and Excel. They tried to use an older permit, probably from 2016, I believe, and that was no longer, could no longer be used. So the building inspector asked them to use a new one and he did not receive that until 9/13. So I just want to be on the record as saying that out loud. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any information you could provide to us would be helpful.
Okay. My last thing that I want to talk about is hours, from, from the town's perspective, is hours of operation. Lately, Excel's been working on Saturdays, you know, extended hours. And I know that we don't have, they are working without a permit from the town of Freetown, right? We all know that. We're in litigation for that right now. But I just want to ask a couple of questions about, about that. The initial permit giving, given to Excel by DEP had hours of operation. And I believe that was on page five, if I'm not mistaken. But also on page five, there was note number seven and it says, does not intend to conflict with the authority of the town of Freetown to establish hours of operation for the facility.
Correct.
Okay. So I'm just wondering why, at this point, knowing the frustration of the neighbors, knowing the frustration of the town, having to have endured toxic odors, loud noises, debris falling all over the place, all of these other issues, why have you not amended your permit to reflect what the town truly wanted?
Sure. So as soon as we hear what the finality is with regards to the decision that's pending in the court, Mass DEP will certainly adhere to whatever the, the resolution of that case is. So Attorney Marky is here. He can describe, if he wishes to describe any status. But I mean, basically, when, when there's something that's undergoing an appeal or some sort of process, adjudicatory process, Mass DEP stands back and waits until that actually basically takes place. There's, there's a court that's deciding that. Our, our permit does not intend to conflict at all. But right now, until there's that finality, Mass DEP can, cannot basically adhere to the wishes of the town, per se, because we're still waiting for resolution from the courts.
Okay. I don't want to hear from, I'm sorry, Mr. Marky, it's not, I'm not trying to be rude. I don't want to get into the litigation that's going on. I want to step away from that. I'm just wondering, it's a straight question for DEP, why you would, knowing that this is what the town wanted, why you would not support the town?
So Millie, this is Seth. I'll be glad to respond to that if you want me to.
Yes. I mean, I thought I made myself abundantly clear, but please.
Well, so, and Dan, chime in if you need to. The way, you know, DEP's air permitting works is we cannot unilaterally go in and amend a permit that's been issued. It's been issued, the facility's been granted it. And so without either the applicant coming back and asking for a modification or some other, you know, legal mechanism, that's the permit that's in place. So we cannot unilaterally go in and change the operating hours that are in the existing permit. Is that accurate, Dan?
Yeah, that, that's pretty accurate. That, that would be subject to an appeal. And typically, when these scenarios happen, if a town or another entity imposes more restrictive hours, our permit would not override that. It wouldn't sort of preempt that, if that makes sense. So if the town, whether unilaterally or through some agreement, which as I understand, had been in place back in the spring of 2018, there was some type of an agreement between the town and the Excel where they, where they agreed not to operate on Saturdays, our permit would not preempt that. You know, the operating hours that were, that were put in, our permit was something that was vetted. Everybody had a chance to look at the time. So the town's free to do whatever they want. I don't mean that in a flip way. But if we would, in order for us to unilaterally amend the permit, it'd be subject to an appeal by both the facility and citizens' groups and all that kind of stuff. We would have to have, it could not be arbitrary and capricious. So it's a fairly involved process. And, and that sort of picks up on what Seth was.
Okay, so that, that still is a possibility going forward. Thank you. I'll just, Millie, I know you have some questions from the residents, so I have some too. But let's see if they overlap and you can go through yours.
Sure. So do you want me, I apologize, I just did not inquire as to how we would move forward on question, answer, discussions. Do you want for me to articulate the questions, Select Woman?
You said, you did receive some, correct? Maybe you can read the ones that you, you have, that you have gotten to? Maybe read those out loud and perhaps I have some of the same ones that were given to me. I also don't want to leave out Carol Fiola or Paul Schmidt nor the rest of the town. So should they have any follow-ups? I'd like, be happy to hear from them as well.
Could I just jump in, Lisa and Millie, because the questions that were sent to Millie came via our office because we were hoping to facilitate for you the meeting. And so there was some overlap. I think that moving forward, Millie has, really, air quality, groundwater and health under the guise of health issues was really two major questions. And I just thought, Millie, as you have them, maybe you could summarize a little bit because there's a lot of, a lot of parts to each of these questions, but I think the gist of it is, how do you determine whether the air quality and the smells are safe for the residents? That really was one of the main questions. And turn it over to you.
Right. So again, we tried to pretty much compile the questions as they kind of came in on a rolling basis. We have, we were provided with 26 questions. Let's go ahead and start. The first, and we will be taking turns predicated on area of expertise. The first question we discussed, which is what does DEP think the explosion are, these explosions are? And I think I have, well, I have for sure my notes that based on discussions with Fire Chief, the Excel Council, we are going to partner and look into this issue very closely. Particularly as we go through the process of installing, they go through the process of installing these, the third row of containers. I think, Select Woman Pacchico, you offered some really good, interesting options and recommendations. And I think all those should be taken into consideration. So more to come on the issue of explosions on short notice. And as we stated, the second question was, is it DEP's or Excel's role to figure out what they are? I want to say that it's really everybody's role. We all have a role to play in here, whether it's, as the residents have done, advising us, sending complaints, which again, when we get them, we immediately call Excel. We need to start calling the town, also putting our heads together. So we have, we have a path forward there for further exploration. There was a question with regards to can Mass DEP conduct surveillance? This is a question that came up two years ago and Representative Fiola invited Mass DEP. and Representative Viola invited Mass DEP to attend a meeting at the State House Representative, if you remember that, I think it was possibly two summers ago. This was brought up by Representative Viola to our commissioner at a meeting at the State House approximately two years ago. And at that time, Mass DEP explained, and I failed to have the letter, but I'd be more than happy to, I produced the letter and forwarded it. Select woman Pacheco, I can send it to you for everybody to see. Mass DEP basically described that we have used surveillance cameras as part of investigatory work, but the work is very different. The scope of the work has been dramatically different than the one that we're contending with today. The work is conducted by the Mass DEP Strike Force and often at the request of city officials, legislators. The use of cameras really is for the purposes of investigating illegal dumpings, whether it's in a underutilized abandoned parcel, the side of the road, cameras are placed in a public place. And basically, they pan the actual automobile, the automobile license plate. This work is actually performed in coordination with the police because they do have the jurisdiction with regards to prosecuting. So dramatically different. These cameras that are in the possession of the Strike Force only have the visual technology capability, not the audio, which is what we're really trying to, to pursue. If there is an issue with regards to illegal, illegal dumping, I'd be more than happy to work, basically bring it up to the attention of the Strike Force. But again, for the purposes of investigating the explosions, we had, we had this conversation two years ago, and unfortunately, we do not have the technology to address that. Let's see, the other one deals with update on DEP's role with Excel and the town on the ACO, third row permits licenses. I'm going to give the floor to Attorney DeHadeville to further discuss that a little bit more.
Yeah, I mean, we, I, just to follow up on what I'd said, I mean, I think we answered it. But the, the ACO sets out a schedule for the installation of the containers. Again, it's our understanding, based on representations from Excel, that all containers are on-site. Currently working with a site engineer of some sort to get them in place, and that should occur before February twenty-sixth. The goal of the containers will be to further mitigate the noise. And we won't know that until we do the testing after they've been installed. And again, that's a joint testing. It's not reliant solely upon Excel sound engineers. We do not know at this time what the outcome's going to be. There's not a cookie cutter recipe that says, if you install this, here's the reduction in sound. It's a bit of a moving target, trying to figure this out. So we're hopeful this is going to work or substantially reduce the sound so that the facility will be in compliance, ongoing compliance, continual compliance, I should say, with their permit and significantly reduce any noise, which would be beneficial to the residents.
So ultimately, it is Excel's responsibility to be in compliance with the ACO. So this is a mitigation idea. We are hopeful that it will work, which is why it's so important to monitor, which is the intention. And more to come with regards to what the test results tell us. And I think at this time, I'm just letting you know that we will need citizen residence assistance with regards to access akin to past efforts. And we will be disclosing the information clearly once the results are back because the sound, sounds, its samples are taken from private property. We have also, just to close the loop on that, Seth is the lead on this study, and he has reached agreement, at least in the past, he had reached agreement that he would call the residents the night before, the morning before, just to ensure that there is, there is, as it's been represented before, rigging of the data. We want to be sure that this is happening in a way that there are no artificial introduction of sound. So we're very cognizant of that. Are we good, Dan?
Yeah, yeah, I think we're all set on the ACO. Does any questions?
And this is a public document because it's been issued by the department. If anybody needs it, we'd be more than happy to put together a compendium. Okay, so basically, what does a DEP permit allow for hours of operation? I think we discussed that, but select woman Pacheco, let me know if we need to further discuss.
No, we're good with that. Thank you.
Okay. The, the next question was, if there was a legal mediation of some kind? We don't know. We are not in mediation or any kind of arbitration. So from our end, the answer is no. Dan, the next one speaks to, there is a disconnect between DEP permits and the town's seasoned assist. Is there a way for these things to meet in the middle? State isn't respecting the will of the town?
Yeah, if I understand where the question's going, it's similar to what was discussed back in the summer of two thousand eighteen when we all met. It's the issue of the town would not renew the secondhand merchandise license in there. You know, there was a question raised, well, since they, they don't have their ability from the town's perspective to operate, which they need that license or that permit to do so, shouldn't the department revoke its air permit? And I just want to make it clear that our reg, our regulations and our air statute do not give us the authorization to revoke or suspend a permit based upon whether it's municipal, another state, or a federal permit, whether it's been revoked or suspended or whatever. Our ability to revoke that air permit is grounded solely in whether they're compliant with the air permit in the underlying regulations. And, you know, that's, it's a pretty black and white type of an answer. We just don't have that authority to every time, and it happens, you know, it could happen frequently. An entity loses some kind of a local authorization for us to go ahead and suspend or otherwise revoke our permit that we've issued to them. Now, I want to be clear about is, that does not mean our permit overrides or otherwise preempts. Just like the operating hours, something that the town may have imposed or withdrawn or suspended or whatever. So our permit lives on its own, and it does not preempt anything the town is otherwise doing or a municipality would do. Does that answer that, Millie?
Yes, but most importantly, does that answer the question for select woman Pacheco?
I just have a follow-up. And this came from one of the neighbors. If the DEP can suspend operations for a company like PJ Keating in a cushionet because of ongoing neighborhood complaints, why can't they do the same for Excel?
Seth?
So it's a very different set of circumstances over at PJ Keating. It had to do with actually a piece of equipment that had been previously permitted but was relocated and triggered, basically our non-major CPA application requirements.
CPA?
Pardon me?
CPA is?
Oh, a non-major comprehensive plan application? And so the, the actual change that they made at the facility was subject to permitting. And so before they were allowed to operate the piece of equipment that was subject to the permitting, they were told that they could not operate it because we were going to have to have a whole new application submitted in a full air quality permit review done for it. So it's a different set of circumstances from the existing facility at Excel.
Thank you for that follow-up.
So I'm going to continue to do justice to some of the questions. I'll be, they have, they may have been answered. But again, quote, Excel told us one story. Excel never answered our questions and then never picked up the permit. Dan, if you'd like to.
Yeah, I mean, we've dealt into that before, and I'm not sure if it's any benefit to you folks. So I think we addressed that.
Okay.
But we can get into it again. I just, I, I think we addressed it pretty thoroughly, but it's, it's fine with us.
Okay, likewise, eleven, town, town told us one story. Now towns, says town sat on application. So we'll, we'll move on. Okay. Question number twelve, has DEP done air quality tests? Seth?
So the answer to that question is yes. Back in February of twenty eighteen, the Mass DEP Field Assessment and Support Team did sampling with their mobile unit. They set up sampling locations at Alexander Drive and nine Alexander Drive and thirty-four High Street, which were downwind while the facility was operating. And they also sampled at a site upwind, up at Ridge Hill Road, up near the turnaround area up there. We've also done stack testing, emission stack testing of the facility back in twenty seventeen. And so the results of those, both the, the ambient monitoring that was done back in twenty eighteen and the stack testing are available and showed no negative impacts to the public.
And I have, I have a follow-up. How often do you plan on testing?
So I wanted, I had not seen this question until late this afternoon, unfortunately. But I'd like to check with the Boston team. And Seth, this is sort of as I was trying to do justice to this question. Through the Volkswagen settlement, there is an idea, basically, there are plans to deploy air quality sensors throughout the state. I'd like to further discuss this with our Assistant Commissioner of the Bureau of Air and Waste to see if there are any plans for areas within the Southeast region, clearly. But, you know, mostly, they usually go to municipal areas or high urban locations. But I think this is an area that I'd like to explore, select woman Pacheco. Basically, again, predicated on the fact that we have a significant settlement with VW that the nexus is air quality. And a lot of, a lot of communities are actually either purchasing themselves, but I think this settlement might be something to explore, and I'd like to do that in short order. I just got this question today.
All right, thank you so much. If you could follow up, that would be truly appreciated.
Absolutely. Okay, the next one, groundwater testing. So again, this was a question that I really wanted to do justice to because Mass DEP spends a lot of time, whether it's working with potential responsible parties or Mass DEP doing work themselves. If there is a hazardous waste site within areas that are abandoned or don't have a party to respond. I did, again, my apologies, I got this question today and I, this afternoon, and I did not have the opportunity to go on to Mass GIS. I promise you that I will do that tomorrow to see if I can find any potential, what I, when I say twenty-one E sites, are sites with releases of oil or hazardous materials to the environment. We often work a lot with cities and towns, legislators that have questions on behalf of their constituents. In fact, Representative Viola and Representative Schmidt have actually asked us in the past to please do a search. So this is something that I would like to follow up on with regards to groundwater testing that might not be germane at Excel, but maybe near Excel. I do want to state, however, that our records do show that Alexandria Drive is on municipal water. So at least that exposure pathway relative to the ingestion of any potential contaminated groundwater is, is not present with regards to, because of the municipal water. High Street is on private wells, which are regulated the Board of Health. And I know that Board Health Agent Decno is with us today. So maybe she has a little bit more to add here. But in general, the property owner is responsible for the quality when they get the permit, and they basically follow through with private well sampling or otherwise. I do want to say that a review of the local topography indicates that the groundwater flows toward the Sonnet River. So to that end, private wells that we've identified on High Street specifically, and again, there could be more in the area. They seem to be up gradient from Excel. Just a quick note, so that since we are in this forum, there is transparency too with regards to Mass DEP involvement as it pertains to private wells. On January thirteen, Mass DEP met with the town of Free Town Acting Force Agent, and also Representative Paul Schmidt was there. Also, a representative for Sir Roderick's office was there. And we basically talked about a new program, which is private well sampling. And what we're focusing on is perfluorinated compounds. So this is a new program. Basically, the legislature has given us monies to sample private wells across the Commonwealth. In the Southeast region, we have over eighty-one towns that, pardon me, across the Commonwealth, eighty-one towns where residents, the water they drink is private well water. Free Town is one of them. We had the conversation on January thirteen. And we do understand that the town wants to basically work with DEP. It's a partner agreement with UMass Amherst. We will be reaching out to around a hundred and eighty private well owners with the hope that between twenty and forty of them will say, yes, come in and sample my well. Again, this is for perfluorinated compounds. So the work is underway, working with the Board of Health as a primary point of contact, the town administrator. And it's our hope that we can actually have a little bit more information, shed more light with regards to private well sampling. We are in full partnership with the town on this.
Thank you.
Question number fourteen, any additional engineering things that can be done to prevent the noise? Seth, if you want to take that one?
So, let's see, we have, we have the measures that are being implemented through the ACO. The company also, in a sound mitigation plan that they submitted as part of the ACO, added some sound mitigation in a couple of areas that weren't required by the ACO, including at the magnet stand, at the material splitter chute, stacker belt, in the non-ferrous plant. So hopefully, that's been helping as well. But we're not going to be able to tell if and what may, may be necessary until we do our next round of, you know, sound monitoring. See what we get for results, and then we'll, we'll go from there. We'll analyze, you know, what, what those numbers look like and, and move forward once we have those results.
It could all very well be best management practices that may tie in with the, the explosions as they have been represented. So everything ties together. The next question is, how many ACO failures, permit violations, et cetera, do they get before DEP revokes their permits for the facility? Again, I just want to focus on the fact that we are ensuring, in our job right now, in front of us, watching for that, that important date of February twenty-sixth for the installation of the third row of containers. After that, they have the thirty days thereafter where the sound study needs to take place. Mass DEP is ready to go, conducting our own independent study side by side so we can duplicate the results, or if they're vastly apart, determine why. But at this time, I can tell you that we do not have a prescribed number of noncompliance situations that basically automatically trigger. There's no policy that basically states when a permit is revoked. We, it's a case by case. And Dan, I want to be sure that I'm accurate on this.
Yeah, that's accurate. There's no magic formula on any permit, regardless of the program, any, any set of regulations, when the department may revoke a permit. It really depends on the severity of the violations, whether there's a chance the entity can come back into compliance. It's not the department's goal to revoke or suspend permits as a first out-of-hand reaction every time there's noncompliance. Attempt to try to work with entities to come back into compliance. And the revocation or suspension of a permit would really be the last resort when we feel we can't get there. There is no magic number, once you reach this many, you're done. And of course, just a revocation or suspension is subject to an appeal. It doesn't happen immediately. We'd have to go through the entire administrative and likely a judicial process before it became final. So it is, it's done on a case-by-case basis, and it's rare. The agency, it's very rare for the department to do that, regardless of the program.
I do want to say that our ACO, when you read it, basically speaks to what happens potentially, if there is the fault on the time, on, on the actual actions that we're pursuing. So it's all written in there.
I just have a follow-up. So there's no, hardly ever any revocations of permits. So if a company, any company continues to have loud explosions or noises, and continues to fill the air with, and I'm just saying any company, fill the air with toxins and we find out that that isn't, you know, really what's going on and there are high levels of whatever toxins are in the area and debris and everything else. So that happens over, 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 over again, there's no revocation of their license. Is that what I'm to understand? Because I'm really confused.
No, I don't think so. I, I think it's, I think it's important to understand it's, it's very much a case by case basis. What we've determined, the level of non-compliance is whether, and whether it can be solved. The fact scenario that you just gave us would, sounds like something pretty severe. And that would be looked at very differently than something, some, an entity that's slightly out of compliance with their permit. So it's, it's really a matter of degrees. And it's not to sound pressed, but it is a bit difficult to answer generically, other than to say there is no magic number or magic formula. But obviously it depends on the severity of the, of the violations, coupled with the risk to human health and ultimately whether there's any chance the facility can come back into compliance. So it's sort of a combination of all those things.
So what is, what is the threshold to risk of human health? As you see it?
Well, right now, we're trying to see if the third row will mitigate the sound. And that's why, again, to, to answer the question generically, I think it, it does not do justice. I don't want to be, to represent something that may, may not be accurate. We will need to see if this, if Excel, actually the mitigation works. Select woman Pacheco will need to see. That's, there's an administrative consent order. We, we need to pursue that. If the company does not follow through with the installation of the containers or the, or the actual sound protocol that needs to be developed, Mass DEP approved and then implemented, that's a different scenario.
Okay, but that, I'm not, I wanted to take Excel out of this question. Do, does DEP have a threshold for a violation of, of human health? Do you have a threshold where you cannot take it anymore? Or do you just keep saying, well, if you do this, then we can let you go? Or if you do this, then you meet that threshold? Like, what is your threshold? When, when do you say, what is your threshold?
So what, let me just say, every program has a different, I mean, I don't need, I don't want bureaucratic, but I think we need to, we're talking about air permits. That's a separate and apart discussion from a super fund site. So regards to this particular situation, the solution here is mitigating, mitigating. If the noise is not mitigated, then we need to then decide what are the next steps.
Okay, and that, and that goes as far, you're talking air quality. And I know that you said that you were going to do some more testing on the air quality, not so, not, not only noise, but the smoke stack and the toxins in the, in, for air quality. So you are going to follow up with that, right?
So I want to, on the record, say that that's an idea that I would like to explore with the Boston group, because there is a VW settlement. This is fresh and emerging. For all I know, when I go back to my Boston folks, they will say these funds are committed. There's a scope of work. You know, different communities will be getting these air quality sensors. I would like to introduce this as an idea to see if we can get some assistance with regards to air testing, since it's going to be done anyway across the Commonwealth.
I just, I just wanted to make sure that you do have a threshold and that it's just not going to continue because for anybody, not, not just for Free Town, but for anybody, you do have a threshold.
Right, so for, when you say threshold, I'm going to say standards. Maybe it's just a terminology issue. We do have, for example, particulate matter ten, particulate matter two point five. We have different air quality standards or that basically may help guide decisions with regards to attainment or non-attainment. And maybe Seth, if you want to expand upon that.
Well, currently, the facility is not out of compliance with anything in their permit from Mass DEP. And so the, the pollutants that are regulated by that permit are, you know, they're in compliance right now. So, you know, that, that's, that's all I can say on that. I don't, you know, I don't know, Millie, if we want to talk a little bit more or not about, you know, enforcement and, you know, in, in the event that there were violations of, you know, either the permit requirements for emissions or impacts that were created by them. You know, we look into them and, and look to mitigate them.
Absolutely. With, with all, with all due respect, the test, the, the testing was done in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen. We're now into twenty twenty-one. And I know that Millie, I'll just put it back on you. You did say that you're going to follow up with some new testing. So I just, I don't want to beat a dead horse. I think it is time for new testing. I also want to know if, if the town asks for a specific testing, would DEP be open to that?
So I'm open to anything.
Okay.
Bottom line is, you know, Excel, if they have an obligation for testing and that's what the permit says, we will pursue it.
Okay, thank you.
DEP's efforts might be germane, just maybe work in partnership with the town. And I need to get to the ball, you know, to understand what is the actual scope of work that is called for or has been approved again as a result of the Volkswagen settlement. I'm just trying to see if we can have some kind of pilot project. Maybe we can deploy some sensors in the area to help better understand and sift through concerns, air quality concerns in the area. Again, separate and apart, because we do have a lot of sources. The industrial location, I was there this morning, just at least trying to remember and do a visual. It has grown substantially. I see a lot of different truck trailers out there that were not there a year ago before COVID. Apparently, the cannabis is up and running. It has a different complexion. So I just want to bring that to bear.
Some of those trailers, and I'm, I'm not going to speak directly, I think, have to do with Excel. But I'm not a hundred percent sure. I think they use some of that as a holding spot. Yes, the cannabis is up and running. But there, as far as to my knowledge, it hasn't been any new permits for, or any site plan review in that area. So there haven't been any new businesses in that area.
Okay, so let's make sure that we work together in developing this pilot idea with or without Excel.
That, that sounds very good to me. I am all, I'm all for that. I believe that our selectman George and Trevor will also be on board as well as our Board of Health Agent and the town administrator. So I think that we, they'll all be eager to work with you on something that we could put in writing and find out. You know, I know that we're on almost, we have about five more minutes left. I don't know if there's any other questions that you have that we haven't covered already.
Okay. Let's see, there's a question that I think speaks to Representative Fiola's concern on behalf of her constituency, which is the responsible parties in the event that health issues arise in the future by local residents that have had to endure the potential poisons being released into the environment who's responsible. It seems that the town has attempted to cease the business operations occurring at Excel, but have been unable to successfully do so. So I'd like to get a clear understanding of where to focus my energy if a cancer cluster or other type of health phenomenon, phenomenon occurs. So this is a question that often comes up to Mass DEP. We have over, I guess, my tenure as DEP with going into twenty-two years now, I've been part of a lot of basically referrals to the Massachusetts Department of Public Health, the Bureau of Environmental Health Assessments. We currently have two or three efforts of this type in Southeast region, in the Southeast region, one specifically that I'd be more than happy to share with you. It's ongoing. And basically, Mass DPH is the lead, has to do with the fireworks site up in Hanover. Basically, there was a concern about cancer. Mass DPH is taking the lead on that. And what they do, they usually use data from the cancer registries and they perform their environmental statistical work. So if there are concerns of this nature now or in the future, I would definitely be more than happy to facilitate and have a conversation with DPH on behalf of the residents. Other questions, basically noise, are there additional engineering mechanisms? I think we covered that a little bit. We'll see what the installation brings us. What are the explosions? We talked a little bit about that. Excel allowed to operate on weekends. We spoke about that. And other sound mitigation efforts that could be taken again. Mass DEP is going to be looking for assistance from the residents by way of access. And we look forward to working together.
Thank you. I don't know if Carol or, well, Representative Schmidt, do you have anything? And then I'll turn it over to either George, if you have anything, and the town. Carol, you're unmuted. Paul, go ahead.
The host.
There you go.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I just wanted to thank you, Lisa, for bringing us together. I think this has been very helpful. Thank you, Carol, for being the point person of the delegation on this. And thank you, Millie, Dan, and Seth. I just want to clarify the sound monitoring that will take place after the, after February twenty-sixth. That is a twenty-four hour a day monitoring?
No, it's a snapshot in time. And Seth, if you want to very quickly summarize it, given, given that we're running a little bit out of time, but more than happy to discuss it also, Representative.
So Representative Schmidt, it basically, it's a number of twenty-minute sampling periods whereby, you know, the sound is monitored. It goes into a monitor that collects the data digitally. And then when conditions are right, we continue to do twenty-minute runs over certain, you know, as many, you know, as many of those as we can get in during a daytime run when the facility is operating. Prior to the facility operating, we also take readings to try, to get what we call background so that you have something to compare with the increase in sound is when the facility is operating. So it's not a twenty, you know, it's not a twenty-four hour continuous deal. Basically, it's done in discrete periods of time that are mostly twenty minutes long.
Well, perhaps we could discuss this offline then, Millie and Seth, because it apparently, the explosions happen two, three, four times a week. And it seems to me that we really need, I guess, ten hour a day monitoring for the entire time that the, that Excel is in operation. So I'm happy to discuss the appropriateness of that request offline. My, my second point is that one of our residents, I think, has asked whether we have looked into the OSHA reports. They clearly report the reason to all explosions. Can anyone clarify that?
We'd be happy and open to look at any documentation or information. I don't know if the OSHA reports are filed by Excel. So is that, not sure if, maybe Attorney Marky, but well, I'm taking that question and we'll follow up with, with you, Representative.
Sure, I, just to answer, Millie, since you asked me, I'm unaware of any OSHA reports that dealt with that issue. I know that just like other workplaces, where if there's a workplace injury to an employee, there's been some OSHA inspections. But I'm certainly happy to answer to Attorney DeHediville or to Mr. Pickering with anything that may relate to that. And if, if the Representative Schmidt has any specific report that he wants us to review, I'm happy to take it and review it with the.
Also, can we follow up on that? Do you think that the state fire marshal should be involved at this time as well?
I know the state fire marshal was involved when there was, we had, Mass DP went to the side, it was some, some sort of fire. So the fire marshal was there and, and generated a report. I can't speak for the fire marshal, but again, all hands on deck.
Okay.
Lisa, can I, I'm unmuted now somehow.
Thank you.
Muted me. I wanted to say.
Sorry about that.
Everybody here, everybody here, from, from every perspective, because, you know, we've been at this for a long time now. And I think everyone wants to have, everyone on, on at least mostly the same page. I, I want to thank you, Millie, I think Lisa, for asking us to get together. I think after March twenty-sixth, I think we should probably consider gathering again in some format, or at least DEP and, and the town. Excel will, by the numbers here, have been given thirty days from the twenty-sixth to show that they are in compliance, I guess. And you will be conducting a sound monitoring test. If the containers are not up, then we will have a different set of issues that everyone, DEP and Excel will be addressing. So I, I just think that there's a way forward, as you would say, Millie. I think the VW testing fund is something Rep Schmidt and I can also follow up with, with the, you know, the state. I, I think that will allow funding for testing, whether it's Excel or whomever, but I think it will be important. And I think, I guess my question to you would be, what type, what cost might be involved? Because maybe there's something else Rep Schmidt and I could work on to ensure that the proper equipment is available beyond what's available from the strike task force for further testing.
Yes, so I believe the scope has already been developed. And from what I hear, it's, these sensors are not expensive at all. Originally, right now, Mass DEP, because of the environmental justice policies, we are working to develop initiatives that involve air quality in environmental justice areas. But again, I would be more than happy to advocate for some sort of inclusion of Free Town in the area, the vicinity of Free Town. And I think it's something that, I don't want to make any promises, but I come to you with an open, open desire to, to be an advocate for, for the residents' concerns and in your concerns and the town officials' concerns. So I know for a fact that the scope has been developed. I do know that Mass DEP Southeast Region was going to be participating alongside with the Bureau of Air and Waste, air quality staff in the city of Brockton initially. But I'd be very happy and more than, more than pleased to be able to, to advocate for some of these air quality sensors being basically directed at the town.
So that would be a great follow up for us and Courtney and you, Millie and, and Rep Schmidt and I. So we will do that, Lisa, select woman Pacheco, on that issue. I think that the groundwater testing was also discussed and that there is, I, I think there is some potential funding to do that. I think we should examine that as well.
So I want to say what my intention there was to do a Mass GIS, look at the overlay and identify any nearby testing results that we may have as a first pass to kind of get a sense for what is in the area around us. Possibly work that has been performed by other responsible parties and consultants, but it might be a first start. I just want to clarify that for residents that are drinking public water, the water is subject to federal and state drinking water laws. We have that information available in our Mass DEP webpage. And clearly, the consumer confidence reports that come out every July indicate whether there is any kind of excursions or infractions germane to municipal water. We get those results in my community. I'm on municipal water, we get them. So the issue more is private wells. And we have this perfluorinated compounds, private wells, free testing. The legislature, thank you, has provided us with a pot of dollars also through the Clean Water Trust to pursue this effort. So we will follow up on the, on that particular area. And again, it's a voluntary initiative. Residents, a hundred and eighty residential properties will be receiving these postcards if they haven't yet. And we're hopeful that we will be receiving responses from residents that are willing to, you know, we would send the sample kits, they would collect the samples and then that would help us understand any kind of sources of contamination nearby.
Thank you, Millie. I also, again, want to just end by thanking the residents. You keep us posted. Residents are key to. You keep us posted. Residents are key to moving forward and, and keeping track of things. And Excel, I appreciate you being here today as well, because you get a sense of the concerns, the frustrations. And I said something the other day to Selectwoman Pacheco. I said, if there was a way that we could figure all this out. You know, we can't go back. We, we've already talked through all that stuff going back three years ago and, but here we are. And we've got to figure this out. And I think, I think everyone is, everyone, all of us here, share the concern that we want it all to be right and, and we're going to continue working. So thank you all for being here. Lisa, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. I just, again, want to thank everybody. Just to follow up on one thing, there is an aquifer, a natural aquifer in the area, very close by. So that might be a a starting point. I know that there is a map of all of that, and I'd be happy to share that with you at any time. Also, I think that we should talk offline, be it email or whatever, just to follow up and memorialize everything that we talked about. There are some questions that came to me that I will forward to you that perhaps you might take some time to answer. My number one concern is the residents in that area to ensure that everything is done above board into, and to protect the health and welfare of the citizens of Free Town. That is why we were elected. That is what I will continue to abide by. I look forward to working with all of you to make sure that that happens. George, do you have anything?
No, you've said it all.
Peter?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, Tanya? Poor Peter and Tanya. This is their first big meeting and their first introduction to Excel and D E P. All right. Carol and Representative Schmidt, I will have you in so we can do, so you can meet our new town administrator and the new people on board. How about that?
Great.
All right, perfect.
Looking forward to it.
All right, great. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night. I appreciate it all.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lisa.
Bye.
Thank you.
Don't forget the motion to adjourn and everything.
I will. Kate Rowley, hi. How are you?
Hi, how are you?
Good. It's so good to see you.
You too. How are you?
Oh, you know, crazy.
It's so good to see you.
So good to see you. You take care of yourself.
You too. Thank you.
All right, have fun. She used to work for me. So weird. Are you guys good?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Yai, yai.
Selectwoman Grunwald?
Yes.
And Selectwoman Pacheco.
Yes.
All right. Have a good night, everybody.
All right, thank you.